Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
I'm here. Please join us in a moment of silent reflection as we remember several residents and others who have passed away since the last council meeting. Those would include Eugenia Calme, John A. Schaefer, former resident Frederick Anthony McCarthy, and Martin Resnick, who is the founder and owner of Martin's Crosswind. Please join us in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Councilmember McKinney, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. Councilmember Pope is not with us tonight. She's actually getting a follow-up on some surgery, so she's not going to be with us. She may Zoom in, but I don't believe she's actually going to be with us. City manager Sam Aron is at the ICMA International Municipal City Managers Conference in Pittsburgh, but he's online here with us today. And Assistant City Manager Tim George is with us. Good evening, Mr. George.
Good evening. How are you guys doing?
Not too bad, not too bad. So, let me just start off with this. We hold council meetings generally twice a month to set policy and to take formal actions. Our meetings are open to the public except for executive sessions as authorized by state law so that residents and others can observe council deliberations during these sessions. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered, so we'll pause periodically for public comment during these times if you wish to address council. If you raise your hand, if you're in the room, after being recognized, you can go to the podium. You need to state your name and where you live in Greenbelt or otherwise. We need that for the minutes. If you are on Zoom, you can use the Q&amp;A tab to submit a written question, or you can raise your virtual hand, and after being recognized, we'll promote you so that you can speak. And if you are listening, watching on Facebook, I think, streaming, or YouTube, or cable TV, you can always send us an email to questions@greenbeltind.gov. So, with the public comment during petitions and requests, you've got five minutes to speak on one topic related to a question under consideration. We ask that you avoid questioning the motives of others. And just in general, we're all neighbors, so please, let's be civil. If there's a number of you who are speaking on behalf of a group, and if you could just have one spokesperson actually make the statement, and the other individuals can gather behind that individual. So, that's for petitions and requests, which is the next section of the agenda. We've got a busy agenda tonight. There are a couple of presentations. We're doing a public hearing on the all-resident voting question. That's on the agenda for second reading and possible passage tonight. So, let's go ahead and begin with petitions and requests. Are there any petitions or requests to the council or to the city administration? Yes, please.
Bill Walens, resident, I'll make this quick. I'm still unsatisfied by the various responses I've had, questions I've raised over the last several years, and most particularly with regard to, under what authority, under what statute, council has to appropriate city money in closed session. And then, most recently, last week, there was a meeting on the News Review Meetings column that did not indicate that it was a virtual meeting only. A request has been made to city management, not the council, in the past that meetings should indicate in the News Review whether they're in person or virtual. If they don't say virtual, the assumption is they're in person, and for some of us, or at least one of us in town, he needs the opportunity to ask for a link to attend a virtual meeting. So, I'm hoping city management will specify in the future to whomever's responsible for listing meetings in the News Review to include the fact whether they are in person or virtual, and the venue if they're in person there to take place at, factor.
Well, thank you so much. I see that there's a hand raised in Zoom. It looks like Dr. Lois Rosado, Dr. Rosado, are you there?
I am here. Thank you. Good evening, all. I wanted to make sure that the financial request that the reparations commission submitted was received by everyone, and I want to also explain that we really need a substantial budget if we're going to move into Phase Two of our work and complete it promptly or shortly, because we don't plan to be here for another year. However, at this point, we need expertise, and that is going to be coming from outside individuals. So, kindly make sure you read the request, and if we need to discuss it further, then we welcome attending one of your work sessions.
Thank you very much. I do want to affirm that we've received the request, and we'll be scheduling or moving forward soon as we can. Are there any other petitions or requests? Yes, sir, please. This is something related to the public hearing question that we're going to have in a moment. That's fine. If it's something else, please go ahead.
No. My name is Frankie Fritz. I'm a resident of 23 Ridge Road. Something that I'd heard discussed at prior meetings, kind of informally, but I'd seen in the news, in old editions of the News Review. And if you go to the Capital Bike Share Station outside this building, there is a map that indicates that there's a station at the Greenbelt Metro. I did reach out to council member Calvin Hawkins' staff, and they reached out to Public Works, and Public Works said that there should be a Capital Bike Share Station by the end of the year, which is exciting for folks who want to have a non-driving option round the clock to get to the Greenbelt Metro. So, I just asked this body, I have a petition of one myself, and I just asked that this body continue to keep on Public Works, to stay on that timeline, because I know when things slip through the cracks, it's easy for things to get lost. But I think it would bring a lot of value to the community to have a bike connection so that folks, you know, if they missed the last bus, can find a way, especially with the e-bikes. It's great for accessibility. It's great to build transportation connections, and I would like to see that project completed as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. It's actually two stations, which we've been told will be completed by the end of the year. One at the metro station, the other on Hannover Parkway by Roosevelt High School. We are anxiously awaiting their arrival. We've been waiting a long, long time. Are there any other petitions or requests? Okay, well, hearing none, let us move to the consent agenda. Are there any modifications to the consent agenda? Hearing none, could I please have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
I move. Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and that will bring us to the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda? And if there are none, please, could I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Be his seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved as presented. That's going to move us to the presentations section of the agenda. We have two proclamations. The first is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Breast Cancer Awareness Month is recognized annually during October to honor all who lost their lives to breast cancer and to recognize the courageous survivors who are still fighting. I've actually got a presentation. I know there are at least two individuals here to receive it. Could you come up, please? Three? Welcome, Captain. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
I'll go ahead and read this. Whereas breast cancer profoundly impacts countless Americans annually, ranking among the most prevalent cancers and leading causes of death in women, and whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month serves as a time to honor those who have succumbed to this disease and celebrate the indomitable spirit of survivors who persist in this fight. And whereas this year, a significant number of Americans will face a breast cancer diagnosis, while many will ultimately lose their lives to this relentless disease. And whereas for these individuals and their loved ones, we renew our dedication to the crucial work required to create a future free from all forms of cancer. And whereas scientific research has yielded substantial progress in breast cancer diagnosis and treatment, improving survival rates, yet we must intensify our efforts to build upon these advancements. And whereas we commit to raising awareness by prominently displaying pink ribbons throughout Greenbelt this month, October, recognizing the unwavering dedication of advocates, medical professionals, researchers, and caregivers who strive for a world without breast cancer. Now, therefore, I, Emmett V. Jordan, by the authority vested in me by the residents and city council of Greenbelt, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Greenbelt. We encourage residents to find out if they are at increased risk through local screenings and to join in activities that increase awareness of what Americans can do to prevent breast cancer. So, I'd like to present this proclamation to you. If you turn this way and come a little bit closer, why don't the three of you hold together? Photograph. Counsel, would you like to stand up as well? So, congratulations. Thank you, thank you. So, I was wondering, there's a very special event. There's actually a couple of very special events coming up on October the 5th. And Joyce Bailey, Judy Parker, Catherine, do you want to talk a little bit about the rally that's coming up on October the 5th? And also, there's an individual from Doctor's Hospital, Luminous, Ms. Wilson, who is online. Can we promote her so that she can speak after we hear? She's going to talk about some of the screening activities sort of coming up.
Let's Beat Breast Cancer: A Four-Pronged Approach. Join a Rally. Eat Plants. Exercise Regularly. Limit Alcohol. Maintain a Healthy Weight. Join Local Experts, Community Advocates, and Breast Cancer Survivors for a Special Gathering in Honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, featuring a unique blend of percussionists from local bands to beat the drum. For Breast Cancer Prevention, all are invited to enjoy the music and raise your voice to support this life-saving message. The event will be Saturday, October the 5th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Roosevelt Center, Center Way, Greenbelt, Maryland. Let's Beat Breast Cancer Campaign seeks to raise awareness about, once again, four lifestyle steps that can reduce the risk of breast cancer and the risk of recurrence. The four steps are eat plant-based foods, exercise regularly, limit alcohol, aim for an ideal weight. We look forward to joining together for this important cause.
Hey, thank you so much. Would any of the three of you like to say something about your personal experience?
Thank you so much for listening, and we hope that you can attend our rally.
Catherine, would you like to say anything?
I'd like to say thank you, and thank you to the ladies and for the operation that's bringing this rally to the Greenbelt Center, and we hope we get a good day, and everybody will come and enjoy the day and the music.
Thank you. Hey, thank you so much. That's going to be on Saturday, October 5th, from 11:00 to 1:00, Roosevelt Center, and it's the Beat the Drum Rally. And I understand there's going to be a drum line or something to that effect. It's really exciting. So, also, online on Zoom, I believe we have Ms. Wilson, who is the manager of cancer prevention programs at Luminous Healthcare at Doctor's Hospital. Ms. Wilson, are you there?
Hi, yes, I'm here. Sorry about that. I clicked "Join Panelists," and then I got kicked out.
Well, we can see you now. Hey, thanks for coming on such short notice. There are always many, many prevention and outreach activities going on at Doctor's Hospital for Luminous Healthcare, but there are a number of very, very special activities coming up on the 5th. Can you talk a little bit about breast cancer prevention, and specifically about some of the screenings that will be available on the 5th?
Yes. So, on October 5th, we are having our annual Pink Ribbon Rally. And so, this event is centered around women being able to walk up and get clinical breast exams and mammograms, whether they have insurance or they do not have insurance. At Doctor's Community Hospital, we have several programs that allow women to get screenings if they are uninsured or underinsured, and we also offer the extra benefits, like if they need transplantation or any assistance to help them get those mammograms. So, on October 5th, again, it's going to be like a big party. So, there will be vendors, there's free food, women can walk up and get free mammograms, free clinical breast exams, there will be bra fittings, and lots of fun activities, there will be survivors there, and many more things. Line dancing, you name it, it's there. But the sole purpose is returning our breast. The sole purpose is to promote.
Getting a little echo there.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The sole purpose is to promote breast cancer awareness and to celebrate breast cancer survivors and let people know whether they do or do not have insurance. We have services out there to help women, and these services will also help with treatment of breast cancer, if breast cancer is.
That's fantastic. So, that's on the 5th, and that's going to be at Doctor's Hospital, Luminous, there on Good Luck Road. What are the hours going to be? Because people will want to be here in Greenbelt for the rally from 11:00 to 1:00, but perhaps they can come before or afterwards and get the free screenings.
Right. And so, it is 11:00 to 3:00, but the good part about it is, if for some reason that they do not make it that day to be able to get the walk-up services, they absolutely can call to get assistance to come in at another time, and I can definitely provide the phone number for that.
Well, what's that phone number?
It's going to be 301-552-7724. And that specific phone number is going to be for the Breast and Cervical Cancer Program. And when you call that phone number, if you tell them that you are uninsured, they will work with you to get you qualified for the free breast cancer screenings, and then if you do have insurance, then they will connect you to the regular department where you can get your mammogram.
That's very, very helpful. Thank you for sharing that information, and thank you for all of the different screenings and outreach you and your colleagues do at Doctor's Hospital throughout the year. It's very, very meaningful. We also appreciate the Luminous van that visits Greenbelt a few times a year over Beltway Plaza and here in the center. So, the relationship between Luminous Doctor's Hospital and the city of Greenbelt is something we want to build upon in the present and going forward. So, thank you so much for joining us tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it as well.
What was that phone number one more time? Okay. Hey, thank you so much. And Joyce, Catherine, and Judy, thank you so much for receiving the proclamation. Beat the Drum, 11:00 to 1:00, October the 5th. Okay. And I have one more proclamation. National Hispanic Heritage Month is September 15th through October the 15th. This year's theme, Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together. And I've got a proclamation that I'm going to read out loud. Stand up and read it. Proclamation. Whereas Americans annually commemorate National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th through October 15th, celebrating the culture, heritage, and many contributions of those with ancestral roots in indigenous North America, Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas the 2024 theme, Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together, embodies the spirit of innovation, resilience, and unity that defined the Hispanic experience, offering an opportunity to reaffirm our nation's highest aspirations, a welcoming haven for immigrants and their descendants, and embraces multiculturalism, weaving diverse traditions into our national fabric for collective betterment. And whereas this observance initiated in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson, was expanded under President Reagan in 1988, this spanned 30 days from September 15th through October 15th. And whereas Hispanic Americans, far too numerous to individually name, serve as civil rights advocates, community organizers, corporate leaders, elected officials, military personnel, educators, journalists, first responders, pioneers in the arts and sciences, healthcare professionals, athletes, inventors, entertainers, and in countless other vital roles. And whereas Hispanics continue their rich history of significant and diverse contributions to the cultural, educational, economic, and political vitality of the city of Greenbelt, now, therefore, I, Emmett V. Jordan, by the authority vested in me by the residents and city council of Greenbelt, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month in Greenbelt. Encourage all of our residents to honor the Latino community's rich diversity and celebrate the many ways that they commit to our nation and our society. So, there it is. I just wanted to quickly mention a couple of activities coming up. There is a Latin and Hispanic Heritage Month celebration in Langley Park at the Community Center on October the 5th, also from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. There is a Celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month virtual community conversation featuring Latino Affairs Liaison Samantha Howard on Thursday, September 26th at 4:00 p.m. This event is hosted by the Prince George's County Office of Human Rights and the Prince George's County Memorial Library System. And finally, there is a musical performance by Liva Perez, Dominican-American singer and songwriter, and that's going to take place Saturday, September 28th, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Greenbelt Library. So, there's just tons and tons of events going on in Greenbelt and throughout the county and throughout the country. It's a very important time. So, at this time, we're going to move to the next item on the agenda, and that is a public hearing on all resident voting in 2023 city election. The community was asked if Greenbelt residents who meet residency requirements but are not U.S. citizens should be allowed to vote in these city elections. Other respondents, 59% said yes, 30% said no, and 11 did not respond. At the September 9th, 2024 regular meeting, council voted to schedule a public hearing to hear from the residents. It is recommended that the regular meeting be recessed to conduct the public hearing on all resident voting initiatives, and this meeting should be reconvened, this meeting after the hearing. So, there's no motion required to begin. Let me just say that a charter change like this, it's the practice, it's not unusual to actually have two readings and to have a public hearing, because, you know, it's an important thing, changing the charter around. So, at this time, I'd like to actually begin this public hearing, and council's rule in the public hearing is to listen. So, I hereby call this public hearing on the all-resident voting amendment, charter amendment, to order. And so, anyone who would like to speak, if you raise your hand, you can move to the podium and speak. Greetings. If you could state your name and where you live, more or less.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Aiden Aron. I'm a policy analyst with CASA, and I'm here on behalf of CASA to speak the support of noncitizen voting in the city of Greenbelt. CASA, with a mission to empower and uplift working class and immigrant communities, represents over 155,000 lifetime members. Out of those thousands of our CASA members, called the city of Greenbelt home. Greenbelt is a vibrant and diverse community, enriched by residents from various cultural and national backgrounds. Approximately 30% of Greenbelt residents are born outside of the United States, higher than the national average of 13.5%. This diversity is not just numbers. It represents a multitude of cultures, languages, and experiences that contribute to Greenbelt's shared identity. Today, around the country, immigrants are frequently depicted as outsiders or Burdims, which could not be further from the truth. We know in Greenbelt, immigrant residents are an integral part of the social, economic, and cultural fabric. They contribute to Greenbelt's economies through their businesses, enrich Greenbelt's schools as parents and volunteers, and engage in community activities. However, despite their contributions, immigrant residents are excluded from participating in local elections. It is important that every voice in our community has the opportunity to be heard, especially when it comes to decisions that affect their daily lives. Allowing immigrant residents to vote in Greenbelt elections has significant implications for policy and resource allocation. Immigrant residents bring unique perspectives and need that that should be considered in policy decisions such as in education, public safety, community health, and more. In times of crisis like the recent pandemic, immigrants are often at the forefront, working in essential jobs. By including their voices, Greenbelt can develop a more effective policies that cater to the diverse needs of the entire population. Moreover, allowing noncitizen residents to vote in local election is not radical or unprecedented. Several municipalities across Prince George's, including Hyattsville, Mount Rainier, Coma Manor, Chiverley, and Tacoma Park in Montgomery County, have implemented this policy successfully. In a time of deep division, Greenbelt has the opportunity to choose a different path, one that celebrates its differences and unite all residents and their shared humanity, regardless of where they come from. CASA kindly asks the mayor and the council to support noncitizen voting and send a powerful message that this is a community that values equality, diversity, and participation. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you so much. So, it's a public hearing. We don't really need applause, and the protocol generally is three minutes, more or less. So, who would like to speak next?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Conny Serrano. I am a council member for the town of Edmiston. It's great to visit Greenbelt every time, especially among so many friends. I just came down to support this initiative. In the town of Edmiston, we're also actually voting on this in less than a month because we believe that inclusion and participation is crucial, especially in communities that are so diverse, such as is Greenbelt. And I just want to point out that our town, much like yours, we're joining a group of really amazing cities and jurisdictions that already have kind of taken initiative in this matter. One of the largest jurisdictions that borders our towns and cities is Washington, D.C. In June, they actually, non-citizens, were able to vote for their city council and made In June, they actually, non-citizens, were able to vote for their city council, and they will be able to vote for their mayor in less than two years. And so, this is something that was just passed also in Frederick, which is a pretty large jurisdiction in Maryland. And so, we are just going to join a collaborative message that, again, participation and inclusivity is crucial to Maryland's cities and municipalities across the state. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. And I see Mayor Benitez from Mount Rainier is here as well.
So, good evening. Definitely feel that how many time I come in Greenbelt, I think that at this point, my car knows how to get here faster. But my name is Selena Benitez, Mayor of the city of Mount Rainier. I've been working in immigration organization community since the age of fifteen, so more than two-thirds of my life, this is what I've been dedicated for, right? The city of Mount Rainier, back in twenty seventeen, passed noncitizen voting, and the longest-standing municipality is Tacoma Park, who'll be celebrating thirty years this year. As Councilmember Serrano mentioned, Frederick became the second, who is the second-largest city in Maryland, just voted to approve noncitizen voting. So, I'm happy to hear there's been a lot of efforts from the community voting about a year ago, but also like you guys are taking it very seriously to make sure that this is something that also speaks well about your community, right? Greenbelt's known for being diverse, inclusive, but also a welcoming community. So, I think this falls into the path of what you guys have continued to demonstrate. Many of you guys sitting here today, just like in my city, wouldn't be sitting in those seats had it been gone back like forty, you know, maybe more than forty years ago, right? So, as we continue like leading, because Greenbelt has been known for leading in many ways, I think that to me, I applaud you guys for taking this into the agenda, but also making sure you're hearing the voices of the community. And in doing so, you definitely will be able to join a very cool group of people that Mount Rainier is part of, how it's always high, will build, will come and matter, and the list continues to grow, right? But Chivalry as well, right? But in saying that, I want to say thank you, I'm not going to take the whole entire time, because, you know, I know you have a lot of people, but thank you for always being so welcoming, and I look forward to continue adding and expanding democracy in every city possible. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello, I'm just going to pull this up a little bit. Hi, John Appia Duffel, Four Court Garden Way, thank you so much. I'm only going to take a second. I am just so thrilled that you're taking this issue on. I know that it was a lot of work getting here from the council, from city staff, from folks in the Board of Elections, thank you all for your work putting this measure together and for considering it tonight. I'm a strong supporter of this, I think it's going to make our community stronger, I think it's going to make our community more inclusive. I think when we listen to and include everyone, it's better for our entire community. So, I just want to thank you all for taking this on. I did have the opportunity to read through the language that's in the agenda for this measure, love it, wouldn't change a word, thank you.
Thank you. And who's next, yes, Mr. Hartman.
I'm not as tall as John is, but Michael Hartman, Two Court Garden Way. Couple of things, I'm interested in what kind of outreach was done to the noncitizen community, to inform them about the meeting tonight. I see a lot of people here, and I hope there's a lot of people online, and I hope that your communication and outreach was effective to them. I'm wondering if an effort was made to find out if anyone wanted or needed interpreting services in their language, if they were non-English speakers, and what efforts were made to offer that, should someone want it. Having said that, I strongly support this effort and urge the council to vote on it tonight, not the possibility of voting tonight, but to definitely vote it tonight. I trust that the, that once this opportunity is established and voted, that communicate effective and repeated communication will be made to the people most affected by this change, about the change, and encouraging people to vote in ways that the communication is done, in ways that they receive information, that they learn about things, and using their method, methods, and, yes, merit, that's what I'm saying. And I think that it's important to use those methods and mediums, either networks, social media, other media, written or printed, or spoken, contacting influencers in those communities, working through the schools to send home announcements to parents, putting posters in shopping centers, in houses of worship, hoping that the city services that are provided to noncitizens, that this is also conveyed in those opportunities and word of mouth. And I think it's very important that people learn about these opportunities, again, in ways that they communicate, ways that they receive information. And I'm hoping that it will be successful in encouraging people to vote once they have the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak? Please, sir. Yes.
Actually, I meant the gentleman. I'm Ed Fallon, I live in Thirty-Sixth Court. I'm going to repeat the urgency of this matter and hope that the council will find its way to voting positively on the proposal to let people who are not American citizens participate in local elections. I'm sort of trained as a social scientist, so let me just throw in a couple of quick things. What metropolitan area in the U.S. has the greatest number of people who were in this hemisphere before Columbus? And the answer is the Washington, D.C. area, because we have many people who are mestizos or indios, especially from the three countries from Central America. When my forebears came from Ireland, and people, Europeans and Africans, came in sixteen nineteen and sixteen twenty, there was not a whole series of formalities they had to go through, they just, the white folks of the Plymouth Rock just came in and took over in the other areas. One thing that may not be appreciated fully is the diversity of folks. I attended, who are not citizens, a couple of English as a second language classes, and in particular, there were several Francoformed Africans there. My wife gardens, and there were folks in gardening from Cameroon, from Korea, a number of countries. Probably nationally, the biggest increase in recent years has been from Venezuela, but there are also increasing numbers of people coming into this country from India and China. So, the domination that was very much true for a while.
It's not as big as many cities, but it's a significant amount. So, all non-citizens are permitted to vote in D.C. This only recently passed. The voter registration was permitted in November, and I was the very first person to register to vote. And not only that, I took the opportunity immediately to run for office, for as an advisory neighborhood commissioner. There are over four hundred, so it's not a, you know, a major role, but I am one of four hundred. But I want to point out that, you know, this only happened November of twenty twenty-three. Between November twenty twenty-three and the June primaries, five hundred and ninety-two non-citizens registered to vote. This was with almost no outreach, no public campaign, no voter, just opening up the doors, five hundred and ninety-two people walked in and signed up to register. Not only that, we even have figures of how many non-citizens voted at the primary. One hundred and fifteen of them, so one-fifth of those that registered, voted immediately in that very first primary. And I was among them. I point all of this out, that to say that there is a hunger among non-citizens to vote, the oftentimes you will hear, well, will they actually take this opportunity? Let me, you know, you know, rest assured that non-citizens will take the opportunity. We will definitely need, and Greenbelt definitely will need to do outreach, but opening the doors itself is enough to find that many people will register to vote. D.C. has definitely taken the opportunity to make registration forms available in several languages, up to eight languages, and the forms to be available in that. So, I just wanted to point all of those out and commend you for taking up this opportunity and hope that you will pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Louise Weisman, I live on Lakeside Drive in the Lerner University Square Apartments. I just personally want to tell you why this is so important to me and why I'm in favor of it, is that while I am privileged, white, and an ally, principally in this round of majority of who the immigrants are, I'm second and third generation of Eastern European Jewish immigrants. When my husband, who is fifth-generation Appalachian, approached my uncle at a family function, who was in the room, my uncle said, oh, the fifty or so people that came off the boat together. I was wired to appreciate the roots of being an immigrant, as well as working hard and being part of this country. I want to say that we're not asking for a lot. The people that live in our community that are not citizens are working, they're paying taxes, their kids are in our school. It would be horrible if we didn't give them a voice in those issues, in those areas of their lives. And so, that's pretty much it, and I congratulate the town council, or city council, for taking this on, and thank the election, Board of Elections, for working with everybody to make this thing happen.
Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Chris Herman, I live at Eleven Southway, and my pronouns are she/her. I'm from Cleveland, Ohio. However, my family immigrated from Hungary in the early twentieth century, and other parts of the family from Slovakia, Ireland, and what is now the Czech Republic in the late nineteenth century. So, my family too is one of immigrants, although different from others that you've heard here tonight. I include this information because it is pertinent. Urged the council to adopt the two resolutions regarding all resident voting that were introduced by Councilmember Pompey during the September ninth meeting, and to pass those. As you know, an estimated seventeen percent of Greenbelt residents of voting age do not have citizenship, but they contribute to this community that we all value, including Greenbelt's tax base, as has been mentioned, in numerous ways. Yet, immigrants in Greenbelt, as in so many parts of the country, face disproportionate challenges to their health and well-being. Discriminatory public policy contributes to these disparities, and voting disenfranchisement perpetuates some, exacerbates some, excuse me. As our neighbors in the District of Columbia so frequently and aptly remind us, taxation without representation is fundamentally unjust. So too is depriving Greenbelt residents of the right to help decide local laws and policies that affect their lives. We have the opportunity to make life better for our neighbors than what so many of our ancestors experienced. What's more, as council is aware and has been acknowledged here, city residents who turned out for the previous two elections, I believe, not just one, overwhelmingly expressed their support of all resident voting. So, on a process level, the only democratic option really is to enact the will of the residents, thereby joining our neighbors in the jurisdictions that have been mentioned, and others, and empowering all residents to participate more fully in the communities in which we're all invested. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Go ahead and read this email into the record. Good evening, I won't be able to attend tonight's hearing, but I would like to express my support for the passage of this legislation to allow all residents, including non-U.S. citizens, to vote at local elections. As a seven-year resident of Greenbelt, I see the importance for everyone to get to choose who represents them. Decisions made by the local administration affect all residents' everyday life. Voting in local election gives all residents the possibility to express their opinions and preferences. Thanks for your consideration and the hard work that you put into this for, into this to become a possibility. That's from Lisa Malani. Are there some additional comments, please?
Hello, my name is Alexandria Melanchok, I live at Twenty-three Ridge Road, and I was born in Greece, that's where my mother is from, and I moved to Greenbelt almost a year ago from Silver Spring. And I've worked for several years in immigration, legal, and social services here in Maryland, since I graduated from University of Maryland. And I remember when my mom- And I remember when my mom got her citizenship, it was just before the 2008 primary election. And one of the main motivating reasons that she got her citizenship was to be able to vote in the primary. She renewed her green card for like several years and just kept delaying it, and she finally got her citizenship primarily to be able to vote. I think it's imperative that we include all of our residents, regardless of their immigration status, in our decision-making processes. And I think that this legislation is a necessary first step towards including everyone in our decision-making processes. As Mayor Benita said, Tacoma Park has had this kind of legislation in place for over 30 years, which is actually older than me. So I just want to point out that this is not something new, and this is very common. And so I think this is very exciting, and I'm very grateful to live in a place that's considering this type of legislation right now. And just the last thing I want to say is that I hope that this can be a bare minimum first step for our community and for the council in including and really empowering all of our residents regardless of their immigration status, because I think including people in the voting process is a necessary first step, but it can't be the last one. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Comments? Yeah, Mr. Orleanes.
I would welcome a Bill Orleanes resident. I would welcome this change if council chooses to make it tonight. It's long overdue from at least since it was first suggested to council many, many years ago. It's overdue as well since it was first asked of the residents in the 21 election. And residents indicated that they were supportive of the idea, and it's long overdue since the election in 23, 10 months ago. Demonstrably, residents agreed that this was a good thing to do. So I'm hopeful council will do the good thing tonight and do it. I'd like to suggest that it's taken too long, and the process employed, this formal public hearing, is unnecessary. Council simply could have scheduled the first reading and then the second reading, and with notice to the residents that it was on the agenda tonight, council could have normal kind of colloquy that should occur. Residents have a right to address council, and council could have acted after that. I'd like to suggest that since later on in the agenda, there's a proposed charter review task force that I know I won't be alive. I suspect many people in the Youth Advisory Committee may not be alive when council next chooses to amend the council with good suggestions that have been made to council for many years, such as recognizing the right of Greenbelt employees to organize, something two advisory boards have informed council would be a good thing to do if council chose to do it, such as electing our city council by council district rather than at large, which would produce a council more reflective of the residents would have done so 20 years ago, but certainly in the next election, it would produce a council more reflective of the residents of the city. I will address the council charter review task force later, but I don't think we should have to wait until it's adopted, a three-year process, as council would envision it, before we see our next charter change.
Well, thank you, thank you. Hey, are there any other additional comments? Let's, yes, please, sir.
Hello again. For the record, I hope Bill is still kicking when all those great things happen. But I do want to say, this is what we're doing here is in so much larger a context than just one city. And, you know, the 30 years that have passed since Tacoma Park passed this third, you know, is going to pass for us in the blink of an eye. I think it'll feel when we look back on this decision and how it was made. But we'll also think about what was said a couple weeks ago about immigrant communities in Springfield, Ohio, and how those communities were marginalized and pushed to the side, and that people are easy targets when they don't have a voice in their political process. And that people are easy targets, and that people will fight violently. And the threats of bombings in Springfield reminded me, reading about the bombings in Birmingham, the over 50 bombings in Birmingham during the civil rights movement to prevent people from having the right to vote. All of these things are connected, all of these choreographies of violence that we see time and time and time again in our history rooted in the idea that we can't let other people into our political process, that we can't let working people into our political process, the people that built this country into our political process, obviously is wrong. So many cities have shown it's wrong. We know that it will advance racial equity to do these things. So I urge you to really think about the larger context of what's not just going on in Greenbelt. We know how the people in Greenbelt voted, but what people around the country are hearing, what immigrant folks like my mother hear, what folks hear, like my Italian ancestors who came over as well. We need to remember the context that we're doing that in, that we're part of a larger national movement to actually bring people into our process, not push them out. So I ask you to vote for racial equity, justice, diversity and inclusion. Vote for this measure and do so quickly. Thank you so much for your time and for considering this.
Mr. Ransome.
Hi, I'm Rick Ransome. I'm the Chair of the Community Relations Advisory Board, and I just wanted to reiterate for the people here and the people watching, council already knows this, that this matter was referred to Crab for Crab's input on what we thought about the idea of non-citizen voting, and Crab enthusiastically endorsed this proposal and thought that we should allow all those to vote who can prove that they are residents of Greenbelt. I'd like to use two examples. I hope it don't take too much time, it won't be very long. One example would be Kyla Hannington. She writes for the Newsview. She's the wife of Dan Hamlin, and she is not a US citizen. She is from Canada. I'm sure she still has Canadian citizenship, I don't know, but. And she has the necessary paperwork to show that she rightfully resides in the United States. Kyla is the one who actually discovered the nature of the Walker cemetery plots and brought it to Crab and said, I was doing some research and I stumbled across these what appeared to be graves. Crab went down and looked at it, talked to council about it. It's interesting because I just saw on paper that a group has now formed to try to keep this area cleaned up and to mark the Walker graves for future generations until Kyla. I'm not saying the graves were never recognized, but they certainly weren't recognized until the recognition they have today. And that was partly, a lot of that was on her doing. What I would say is, I was born and raised here. I've been in Greenbelt almost all my life. I've been times in Blensburg and a little bit Virginia, but I've been around here all my life. So, you know, I can speak with experience about what old Greenbelt was like. Okay, great. But the thing is, does that mean that I'm better qualified to speak about what's good for Greenbelt in 2024 than someone who was not born here, did not grow up here? And I think the answer is no. I think people who live here can can prove their resonance, just as everyone has to do, and can also show papers that show, hey, yes, I'm a I'm a person living here from another country, but I am certainly allowed to live here. I may not be a citizen, but all one of the ways I contribute as just as citizens do, I don't see why there's any reason they shouldn't be allowed to vote. In fact, the last thing I would say is, the last part of the pledge of Greenbelt, which Crab also helped to fashion, says, we promise to strive to live in a community that is safe, accessible and fair to all residents. Well, that's part of our community pledge, and I think to not allow these people to vote is not exactly fair. So if we're looking forward to having the kind of town that we pledged to strive to have, I think this is a part of it. Thanks for listening to me.
Yeah, thank you. See, we've got a couple of folks online. The first I see is Mayor.
Good evening. For allowing me to speak this evening, it's it's great to be here. I think that.
Have the city governed? Being on city council does not mean that you can divine the will of the people. It is a position of humility, a position of service to reflect the will of the people. When the voters say this is what they want, this is what they need, city council's duty is to make it happen, not second guess it. So tonight, I look forward to seeing the charter amended as it was put to the voter, not a jot or tittle changed, no city council member getting in the way of the voters' will with a nay. Because if the majority of Greenbelt voted for something twice and city council still thinks that it is up for debate, is Greenbelt really a democracy? And if it is up for debate, and after two city elections, here's another question. Should anyone bother voting in city elections? I believe so, but I look forward to that reassurance. Thank you.
There are additional comments?
We have, we have Jay Davis, former mayor and council member, is strongly in favor of this very important charter amendment. We also had an email from Melissa Ehrenreich. Quote, "The mayor and city council are not deciding national policy. We make decisions about trash pickups, snow removal and equipment for the parks. We have shared concerns with our neighbors regardless of whether they are US citizens." This is a direct quote from, end quote. This is a direct quote from former College Park Councilwoman Christine Nagel dating back to August 2017, when College Park voted to expand non-resident voting. Eleven towns in Maryland have extended the rights for immigrants to vote in city elections, and no, the sky has not fallen. Far from a radical concept, non-resident voting was once commonplace in this country. We can trace its origins back to the very first Congress convened in 1789. Over time, states as they formed reinforced the right of non-citizens to vote simply because they felt that taxation requires representation, and also over time expanded voting rights to women, non-property owners, African Americans, Native Americans, et cetera. Yes, we have seen attacks on non-resident voting linked to the rise of xenophobia and nationalism, most recently during the Jim Crow era. It is good that Greenbelt is seeking a return of these rights and is on the right side of history on this issue. Through this change to our. Uh, through this change to our charter, we seek to include rather than exclude residents living in our city who raise families, pay taxes, and rely on the efficiency and effectiveness of city services. Greenbelt's residents, uh, our Greenbelt citizens have agreed with a decisive margin on a referendum supporting non-resident voting, that it is time for us to expand the right to vote in city elections and on municipal issues to seven thousand two hundred of our neighbors who currently have no say in how our city functions and who represents their needs. Tonight, you can vote yes on the resolutions prevented for your approval to to revise our charter as stated. Thank you, Melissa Ann Ehrenreich, um, at twenty-three D Ridge Road.
Okay. So not seeing any more comments, I'd like to go ahead and adjourn this public hearing and reconvene the Greenbelt City Council meeting, and I'll do that with the knock of this gavel. So what I'd like to do at this point, we've got a lot of items on the agenda to cover tonight. So I'm going to propose that we special order, uh, item number eleven to the next item on the agenda. We'll move administrative reports back. Item number twelve as well. I'd like to make that motion. Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. So item number eleven, an ordinance to amend charter, chapter eight, elections of the Greenbelt City Code, in order to amend section eight dash two voter registration to allow non-citizen residents of the city of Greenbelt to vote in the city of Greenbelt elections. This is for second reading and adoption. Uh, in the twenty twenty-three city election, the community was asked if the Greenbelt residents who meet residency requirements but are not U.S. citizens should be allowed to vote in city elections. Other respondents, fifty-nine percent said yes, thirty percent said no, eleven did not respond. The Board of Elections submitted proposed charter and code amendments to the city council, which has been reviewed by the city solicitor to allow non-citizen residents of the city of Greenbelt to vote in these city elections. Ms. Pompey, you had to introduce this ordinance at the regular meeting on September the ninth. So would you like to reintroduce this ordinance?
I would. An ordinance to amend chapter eight elections of the Greenbelt City Code in order to amend section eight dash two voter registration to allow non-citizen residents of the city of Greenbelt to vote in the city of Greenbelt elections.
Is there a second?
Second. Then, go ahead, Amy, go ahead.
Okay, so discussion. We, we do have, uh, members of the, um, Greenbelt Board of Elections here with us. So before we move ahead with discussion, I would just like to provide you with a brief opportunity if you'd like to make any comments. So, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the amount of time between when this was proposed, when it came up as an advisory question, and when it was referred and brought back to council. Uh, it takes time to draft legislation, and while a advisory question, uh, in an election is a rather succinct one or two sentence statement, i- it's not an ordinance. So would you have anything to say or like to say anything about where we are now or about, uh, about the ordinance in general?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the record, Steve Gilbert, and this is Nicole Shong. Uh, Beth Terry and Allison Gary, uh, were not able to make it tonight, but, um, but all four of us, um, uh, viewed this at some length, the, the issue, and, uh, prepared the charter and code amendments. I was, I was just intending to, uh, answer questions. Uh, we did, um, we did spend a fair amount of time with this, and I would say, uh, I would admit, let's say, that, um, that it was my idea that, um, before non-citizens registered to vote, they would have to show that they'd lived here for a period of time, six months or a year, and they, um, they demonstrated in some way, um, involvement in the city. And those, those, um, those ideas were shot down by the other three members and are not a part of the legislation. So, uh, so the only, the only thing that, um, is a, is a requirement, which is not a county voter registration requirement, is a twenty-one day period. You have to register, if you're not a citizen, twenty-one days or more before, uh, the next city election. Um, and that is to allow the clerk, the office of the clerk, to have time to, um, add the names of folks to the, um, to the, um, to the, to the, to the list. As, as council members know, um, the city clerk at present, the city government have no role in the registration of, um, voters or the, um, the preparation of a voter list or, 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 um, uh, any sort of list, um, of eligible voters. It's all at the county level, and the passage of this legislation, um, will require a new process in the city clerk's office, and it is somewhat likely, I think, that next summer and, uh, fall, before the next election, there will be, there will probably be a need for temporary employment of, of one or two or more people to aid in the process of having people come in, go through the process. Because registering to vote isn't just a matter of, you know, for, for, for our, our purposes, isn't just a matter of coming in and signing a piece of paper and leaving. You, you have to show in some way that you live here. You, you either have to show some paper or you have to, um, sign an affidavit. And, and, and then there's, there's, there's a period of time and, and some, and some obvious staff time and expense to, um, to get the list ready, because in the city election of twenty twenty-five, uh, if this legislation passes, um, the, um, the, um, poll workers will have to see, if you, if you're not registered with the county, they will have to see, the poll workers will have to see that you are on the city list. And, and that is, you know, there's, there's staff time involved, there's, there's some expense, there, there will, there will very likely be the need for temporary employees next summer and fall to get this, to get this done. It depends, of course, on the number of people who actually participate. We could have as few as, you know, a hundred or two hundred, or we could have a lot more than that, because as, as you've heard, there are a lot of non-residents, uh, I mean, non-citizens who, who live in the city. So, um, so that's, um, that's, uh, what I, you know, I wanted to kind of point out. And, um, we're here to answer questions.
Appreciate that. Um, I'll take, uh, Mr. Roberts. I'm going to ask Mr. George or Mr. Samarone just to comment or the city clerk on, uh, the administrative side of things, what, what they think, uh, it's going to take. Mr. Roberts, please.
So I assume that someone that, you know, is a, a non-resident that wants a, a U.S. resident, you know, uh, that wants to vote will have to do the same thing that, uh, any other citizen would have to do in order to register in, in the county system, that, that we have to get, that, you know, a, you know, a resident would have to go through.
That's, that's right.
That's right. Okay. My main concern is that people actually have to live here. You know, that we're not going to set up a system where people can just come in from somewhere else and register and not even live here.
Right, so, so.
If that, if that is covered, I don't have a problem, but I want to make sure that that is the case.
Yes, the, the process will at a minimum require, you know, however, however you end, you end up with the legislation, will at a minimum require showing up, um, and, and proving to the clerk's office that you reside in Greenbelt.
How would they prove that?
They, they, they can either have a paper, a, a, a driver's license, uh, which would obviously be a Maryland driver's license. Um, as if, if you have some kind of student paper, like, um, you know, a document from the University of Maryland that, uh, that, you know, has your address in Greenbelt, something like that, some kind of paper like that, um, state of Maryland or University of Maryland or, or any similar thing. Or if you don't have a paper, you can submit, we would have, we would have a form affidavit. You, you, your affidavit, which is, which is written testimony, as you know, your affidavit would, would say to the city that, um, you are a resident of Greenbelt since, you know, whenever you, you, you started, um, but you don't have a paper to show that. So either you, you show a paper, which is, you know, proof that, that you, you live here, or you, um, or you sign, uh, you know, you, you, you take an oath and, and sign a paper that, uh, that you live here.
So what, what if you're a, uh, you know, a homeless person, for instance, and you don't have an address? And so, you know, that would be the affidavit, right?
Ye- yes, although it's arguable whether, if you, if you, if you don't have an actual formal address, it's, um, you know, we would have to consider that. I mean, you know.
Well, I think it should be considered now before we, before we do it. I think we need to iron, you know, iron that out. Personally, that's what I think, because, I mean, I don't think that's a big, I mean, it's not a big issue, but I, I think it is an issue. I mean, my main concern, as I said before, is that, that people actually do reside here and they, you know, and.
Right.
That's why they want to participate, you know, not that they're, you know, coming here to.
Right.
You know.
If you don't have a formal address, um, but you.
I know, I know now that you don't have to have a formal address in order to vote in the city.
Right.
So that's the case now.
I, I agree with that.
So all I want to do is make sure that everything is fair, that everyone that registered, registered, registers, has to go through the same process and, you know, prove that they live here or whatever it is.
Right.
That's all, that's my main concern. So everybody is treated fairly, everyone's treated the same.
Right. When all, when all is said and done, the burden on a non-citizen, when our process is, is set up, will be no more difficult. The burden will be no more, no more difficult than it will be for a citizen to register with Prince George's County.
So, so essentially, uh, a, a person who's a resident, not a citizen, will be able to, to come, uh, it would have to be before, at least twenty-one days before the actual election. They could produce a, a lease, a utility bill, uh, anything that has an address on it, more or less.
Right.
And they, everyone would, they would also have to sign the affidavit as well. Both would be required.
Uh, if, if you, if you show the clerk when you're registering, um, a lease, you know, with your, with your name and your residence, I mean, your, your address, um, you, you don't have to sign an affidavit.
Yeah, I suppose that makes sense. I'm just thinking of the case where someone, perhaps they're not on a lease, maybe they have a roommate and their name's not on the lease, they don't have anything in their name, uh, they'd sign the affidavit. Then the clerk, just as is the case when council is running and we have to have names on a petition, you would kind of look and see if you could verify the name, but if there was no way of verifying, you would, uh, what would you do? Would you just sign the affidavit and sort of take?
Yeah, we would have a form, and, um, an affidavit, by the way, um, you know, I'm a retired lawyer, it's some, some, um, an affidavit is not a trivial document. You are, um, stating under oath the contents of the affidavit, you know, that, uh, that you live in Greenbelt and, and so forth. Uh, and, um, it's the same as testifying in court, except, except it's, it's in writing and you sign it, as opposed to, you know, raising your hand in front of a judge. So, um, so it's not, it's not a trivial matter, and, uh, the folks who, who take advantage of this opportunity are, are probably advised to bring their lease or whatever they have to show the clerk, as opposed to just doing the affidavit.
Now, is the, is the twenty-one days the, the same as with the county?
No, the, the county.
What's the last day that you can register to vote and, uh, you know, at the county to vote in our elections? I don't even recall.
It's an administrative process, but it's less, it's an administrative requirement, but, but it's less than, I mean, theoretically, you can, you can register to vote in Prince George's County the day before the election, the Monday before the Tuesday. Um, but I, but, but I suspect that the Board of Elections of the county, um, won't let you do that. I mean, they're, they'll have some, there, there's some, there's, there's some requirement, but it's less than twenty-one days.
Yeah, and, and just quickly before, so with the, with the affidavit, that's something, uh, you'd have to, the clerk would witness that and they would sign or would have to be notarized or something like that?
It doesn't have to be, um, it doesn't have to be notarized, it, it can be, and, and often you see an affidavit that's notarized. What, it, under Maryland law, what your affidavit says is I hereby declare and affirm under the penalties of perjury that the statements made above are true and correct. And if you, if you, if you put that at the bottom of your affidavit and sign the affidavit, then you have, um, taken the oath and you, you have put yourself at risk, let's say, of prosecution if your, if your statements are incorrect, prosecution for perjury.
You know, is our code gonna have that, uh, provision in it? Is there gonna be actually be a, a penalty for, for falsifying that?
The, the way that works out, I can, having been a lawyer for a long time, I can tell you, um, the, um, the, um, the violations of the oath for affidavits are not infrequent, and I've never heard of a prosecution. If that, if that makes, if that makes sense.
Does make sense, yes.
A prosec-
Mayor, Mayor Portem.
Doing that, correct?
Oh, yes, oh, yes. Yeah, well, well prosecution is, you know, with a state's attorney.
But if it's not in our code, then there's nothing we can really do, right?
No, it's, it wouldn't be a city, it wouldn't be a city decision.
Well, but this is not the.
If, 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 if an affidavit is signed and it turns out to be false, like the person doesn't, doesn't really live here, they say they live at, you know, um, ten, ten, um, you know, Ridge Road or whatever, uh, and they, and, and it's false, the decision to prosecute that person will be a, a state's attorney decision, not a city decision. The city won't have any involvement.
Right, that makes sense. Uh, Mayor Portem.
Yeah, well, and I just wanted to point out, because I, when we were first talking about this, I looked up the, the, sort of the paper form to register, um, for, for the county, for the state right now, and there is, well, I think it's most common for people to register through the DMV or other things like that, and that's their proof, but there is, there is a place where you, you, if you don't, it talks about if you don't have the proof that you are, I, I, in that case, a U.S. citizen and resident of Maryland, there's a similar sort of spot that you sign saying that this is the case. So we were talking earlier about it's fairly similar to what you have to do to register in Maryland. Most people have a driver's license or something like that to prove that they are a resident of Maryland. This is just proving that with possibly a lease or something like that, but it's, it, at least when I was looking at the form for the state of Maryland, very similar to what we're asking people who would be non, non-citizens to do, just to emphasize that.
Right, uh, all resident voting. I'm, I'm gonna ask Mr. George or Mr. Samarone if, if they would like to comment just about, administratively or logistically, what's your perception of this is gonna mean in the election coming up? Of course, we've got, um, more than a year to kind of work this out, and I'm not gonna say the devil is in the details, but this, you know, so do you, uh, Mr. Samarone or?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, from the administrative process, there'll be things that we will need to do that no matter the number, it doesn't matter the number of people that's up to vote, that we would need to put the labor time to develop the. that we would need to put the labor time to develop the registration form, the marketing materials. We'll obviously need to have that in more than one language. So those things, we would need to do them as part of our administrative process to create a registration process. In terms of the having the personnel to take registrations and walk individuals through registration, that's going to depend on how many folks we have that to register, to vote. So we will not know the staff burden until we actually work through it. But we would obviously have to make some assumptions and do some labor estimates on the additional work hours that will be needed, what kind of service times or window hours we will have to accept registrations and whatnot. So once, we have not invested the time to iron those things out because this hasn't been approved yet. But once council, if council votes to implement this policy change, then we will move forward with estimating the labor hours and administrative costs to design and implement a registration process to fulfill this legislative change.
Well, thank you very much. And fortunately, with our sister municipalities in Prince George's County and other jurisdictions having gone through this for a while, it shouldn't be too much. But, you know, this is a thoughtful process. So council, any other questions or thoughts from council? We can take a couple of questions. I'd like to go ahead and vote on this.
I think we should go ahead and vote. I think we heard we had the public hearing earlier. I think we're kind of getting into the weeds and the details more than we need to for the purposes of this vote tonight. And we did just have, you know, a pretty extended period of public hearing. So I would be in favor of just going ahead and voting.
Yeah, I agree with you. You know, a couple of comments have been made about the amount of time that this has taken and why a public hearing now. You know, we could have easily sat here for quite a bit longer and there's a lot of business to be done. So, I mean, this is a thoughtful process. Having the hearing last week would have actually allowed perhaps more people to speak as long as they wanted to. But here we are. Let's go ahead and vote. There's a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. McKenney?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Niesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
So today, Greenbelt takes a historic step forward in inclusive governance with the passage of all resident voting, the charter amendment. So it's a reflection of our community's commitment to ensuring that every resident has an opportunity to participate in the process. So by extending these voting rights to all adult residents, regardless of citizenship status, we recognize the vital contributions of our diverse population. We're nearly 30% or so born. So we move forward, joining neighboring municipalities. In this progressive move, we reaffirm that in Greenbelt, every resident counts.
Do you need to do the other one, though?
Yes, we do. So that would bring us to the next item on the agenda, which is item number 12. And that's a resolution to repeal, reenact, and amend the city charter, section 15, voters, section 18, registration for election, universal registration, section 19, registration, section 26, voter identity, section 33, appeals, to allow noncitizen residents to vote in city local elections. On August the 8th, 2024, the Greenbelt Board of Elections submitted report number 202403 outlining draft legislation to amend the city charter, section 15, voters, along with the other sections related to registration, voter identity, and appeals to allow noncitizen residents to vote in local elections. As the state of Maryland now allows voters to register until and on election day, the board simplified charter section 18 by removing all but the first paragraph. In addition, the board changed code section 8-2C to state that a noncitizen must register with the city at least 21 days before the first election they wish to vote in, rather than the 30 days before. Ms. Pompey, you did introduce this resolution at the meeting on the 9th. Would you like to introduce it once again?
I would. A resolution to repeal, reenact, and amend the city charter, section 15, voters, section 18, registration for election, universal registration, section 19, registration, section 26, voter identity, section 33, appeals to allow noncitizen residents to vote in local city elections.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Ms. McKenney? Ms. McKenney?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Niesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Yeah, very good, very good. I want to thank the Board of Elections for the extensive work that it's done in reviewing these changes and making, drafting the actual legislation, which is, you know, a big task. So on the administration side, we've got some work to do, but we've got time. So between now and the elections in November of 2025, I think we'll be in good shape. Any other comments from council? Okay. Oh, Jenny.
I just wanted to acknowledge really briefly here Councilman Rick Gordon, for whom this was a real passion. I'm sad he wasn't here to see it today, but I know he'd be really proud of his city, so thank you.
Okay, well, we need to circle back to administrative reports, which is item number eight on the agenda. Item number nine. Assistant City Manager George, Mr. Samron, calling in all the way from Pittsburgh. Man. So, yeah, City Manager Samron, do you want to deliver the report?
Yes, I'll have some highlights and Tim may have additional items to add. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I appreciate you entertaining me attending the ICMA conference, which happens once a year, and I'm learning a lot from my time here. So I appreciate the opportunity to do both things today. Highlights, we have taken over, we are now in possession of the deed for the armory. And part of that, taking over the armory requires us to do the inspection and ensure that the property is boarded up and we keep individuals from accessing the interior and the surrounding area of the armory. So we started that process. You would observe the, one of the portable trailer cameras already on the site. The graffiti was removed, or most of the graffiti has been removed this week. So we continue that work to secure the armory and do necessary improvements to ensure the safety of the site. During this period, I also attended the neighborhood walk at Charleston Village and several other community meetings, such as the Franklin Park Tenants Association Meeting and the Greenbelt Station HOA. A few highlights that have been of a high priority to council, we have launched the online bill pay. So we have 16 residents, households that are now paying their bills online. These are new folks that we onboarded on the system. So we're already seeing the adoption of our online bill pay system. We continue to do the onboarding with Paycor system. The team is doing well on meeting the task timeline. So we expect to be able to have a first run at payroll and having the system, at least the first portion of payroll system up and running with Paycor by November. The diversity, equity, inclusion team and Tyra Smith doing a great job at doing the outreach activities for our Phase Two of the DI, the Jedi Audit DI Audit, so that's going well. We also prepared an award submission for the MML Awards. I shared that with council earlier in the week. Please let me know if you have any questions on that. We continue to do work on the Wamata Trail. And the team has gotten the approvals from the state and consent from Wamata to move forward on the additional design that is needed for that work. We've done some great progress on our playgrounds, Spring Hill Lake Playground and the Attic Park Inclusive Playground. Those are moving along. We are on track to complete those projects by the end of the month for the body attic and on timeline to complete the Spring Hill Lake Playground. We will announce a ribbon cutting for Spring Hill Lake Recreation Playground. We've also, we've been able to move forward some of our resurfacing projects. You would have seen notices go out today about Roosevelt Center and the need to close Center Way so that we could grind the road and do the resurfacing work on that section of the road that's happening, that's taking place on the 30th, beginning next Monday. And those are brief updates I have. Mr. George, do you have anything else to add?
No, I was going to just add emphasis to the fact that we now have the armory. Just as an aside, it's been my entire three and a half years and even beyond that, that we've been battling back and forth and just really thanks to Todd Pounds, thanks to our state representative and Van Hollen's office especially for, and the mayor as well, for kind of leaning in there at the end and really getting it freed up. Also, we actually had a very good conversation with our state representatives and kind of broke it free and got things rolling. Van Hollen's office did a great job as well. So just real kudos to everyone for kind of leaning in and helping in. And now we're going to, we have a, we're going to select a consultant, bring that to you at the next meeting, do the feasibility study, and we'll be off and running. So excited to have this project underway.
Yeah, you know, it's been such a long, long run, just getting a hold of this armory. So it looks better already. And I saw on Facebook, some people were asking, oh, what's going on around the armory? So that's what's going on. We're actually stabilizing the, as my colleague, Mr. Roberts, has said so many times, it's just important for us to get in there, to stabilize it, to assess what the situation is so that we can just minimize the amount of work that it'll take to bring it back into use. So thank you. Mayor Portem.
Yeah, just a small question. So I noticed, so on Greenbelt Station Parkway, it looks like one of the light posts like fell or was knocked over or something. And there are cones next to it, so it's like sitting in the median and sticking out. Someone put cones around it, but I noticed when I was coming to the council meeting this evening that the light was still on, even though it's fallen down on the ground, which indicates there is still power to it, which, yeah, seems that, I assume it's probably something Pepco needs to take care of, but can we look at that as quickly as possible? Because that was startling to see that the light was still shining, even though it's completely tipped over and like sticking part, because it's so wide. It's got these two light poles that's like wider than the median, so.
I will follow up with Pepco.
Yeah, they should hopefully fix that as quickly as possible, please, or at least turn it off so that it doesn't have electricity running through it.
Okay, other questions or comments from council?
Yeah, just quickly, I was just glad to see that our grants coordinators were reviewing the Maryland Spay and Neuter Grants Award from, I guess, a couple of years ago. Because I know that's something that our residents have talked about wanting to bring that program back. So I'm glad to see some forward movement on that.
It seems like the grant coordinator, or really it's the grant team, is working together and things are really beginning to fall into place and we're getting some new funding opportunities, which is really exciting. Okay, if there are no further comments, let's kind of move through the rest of the agenda. And that's going to take us up to item number 13, which is a resolution to establish a charter review task force for first reading. This is a resolution for the creation of a charter review task force to review the city charter and the city code as directed by council and to recommend changes for council's consideration. All city council-approved changes would then proceed through the state mandated charter change process. So there are two documents associated with this. Mr. George or Mr. Samron, do you want to walk us quickly through the composition and the charge of the task force?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to acknowledge Mr. George, you've put a lot of effort into reviewing the research on charter review committees and has taken the lead on drafting the proposal. The proposal that's included as an attachment to the resolution is the direct result of the reviews that we've had with council and the feedback we collected from citizens at the work sessions and at the council meetings. And we've incorporated those changes into the proposal. Mr. George, you want to take it away?
I would agree. As a first read, I don't know how much you want to get into this.
That's right, that's right. We don't really need to get into it. But I did just want to talk about it briefly. So this will come up either possibly the next council meeting and if not, then at the one after that for detailed discussion and public comment. So with, I'll go ahead and introduce that into the record. And I'm not seeing the language.
Resolution for the establishment of
Okay, this is a resolution for the establishment of a charter review task force, whereas the city of Greenbelt Council has the responsibility to ensure that the city charter is reflective of enacted city charter amendments. It's compatible with the current county, state, and federal law and is supportive of the needs of the city residents and officials. That is the charge. I don't think I need to read the whole resolution.
I must have my settings weird.
Okay, so that'll come up at the next meeting, perhaps. And that's going to take us to other business. And the first item, item number 14, is authorization of engine replacement or the purchase of a new vehicle to replace vehicle number 607. This is a memorandum from Brian Kim, repair estimated, a couple of quotes. Earlier this year, unit 607, a 2018 Chevy Tahoe assigned to the K-9 unit, was brought in. Due to a check engine light upon initial inspection by our shop supervisor, it was determined that the issue exceeded our diagnostic capabilities. Consequently, the vehicle was forwarded to Sports Chevrolet in Silver Spring for further assessment. The service advisor there has identified extensive repairs necessary, including replacement of the engine long block assembly, the fuel lines, injector seals, and miscellaneous gaskets. Following the city council meeting on Monday, August 12th, 2024, we were asked to provide a detailed account of how a simple check engine light led to recommendations for an engine replacement outlined in the enclosed memorandum. The initial proposal to council was to replace the engine at a cost of $16,396 from Sports Chevrolet. And after significant work to secure a better proposal by a different dealership, we obtained a proposal from AutoNation in Laurel, Maryland, in the amount of $14,753.17. This proposal was $1,643 less than the initial proposal. While council was concerned with the cost of replacing the engine, the police department is in dire need of a K-9 vehicle. And we've explored the option to replace this vehicle with a new Chevy Tahoe at a cost of $83,654 with the outfitting. So staff continues to recommend the council approve the engine replacement and authorize the city manager to execute the attached proposal from AutoNation, totaling $14,753.17, to proceed with the required engine replacement for unit 607. So there we have it. Any comment, before we go there, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Chief, would you want to comment on, anybody want to comment on this vehicle? It does seem like a lot to spend on replacement, but
Yes, hello, Brian Townsend, Assistant Director of Public Works. I'm just here to ask or to answer any questions on this. I directly supervise the mechanics.
Okay, okay. Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. You know, I'm sorry I caused all this problem. You had to bring this back and all this. But, you know, I did ask some pretty simple questions the last time. You know, was the, what's the problem with the engine? I mean, is it low oil pressure? Is it shut off on you? Has it been severely overheated? Is it, you know, what are the symptoms other than the light coming on? And what kind of engine is it?
So it's a
Vortec.
It's, this engine right now is a 3.6 V8. It's a flex fuel engine. Diagnostics originally, when the computer checked, came out with nothing to show that anything was wrong with it. After doing more diagnostic, they changed the spark plugs, wires, did all the other, the normal everyday stuff to do it, changed it all out. After they did that, they drove it around. They still had a problem with it. Check engine light was still on. It was idling rough. They have a detailed account. I mean, I don't know how much you want to go into all of it.
It's got 80,000 miles on it.
So, yes, that's correct. After they did all this, and they did do diagnostic on it, they it, they, we could not determine exactly what was wrong with it. We even did a compression test on the cylinders to see if it did, if it held pressure. And we did a reverse compression to see if it was, if it was pulling back. After that was.
Compression was normal?
Sorry?
Compression was normal in all the cylinder.
Yes. And after that was done, we decided to send it out to Chevrolet. They did, they did a full diagnostic. They found, their stuff came back, it was normal, but they still had problems with it. So they had to do a teardown. After doing a teardown, they figured they would check out the fuel injectors. They replaced the fuel injectors to see if that was a problem. And they just, they found that that was not the problem. You know, it wasn't showing the same, any difference in the pressure. Once that was completed, they figured that was, it was definitely probably the camshaft. So one side of the camshaft was not working properly. So then, once you get into that situation, you're pulling, you're destroying.
How did they determine that, that the cam was?
So, they did, they, these flex engines have had a similar problem in the past. They've, Sport Chevrolet has worked with a lot of them in the past. So they've had a lot of experience with them. After all these diagnostics, it's the last thing that can be done. So they could pull it apart, change the camshaft out, and then there could be, still be a problem with it later on down the road.
So they changed the cam? And is it working properly?
So, no, no, they did not change the cam. The option was to do all that breakdown, but they were saying by the time you did all that, your engine still be that same old engine, and you have all the money invested.
Eighty thousand miles, not an old engine, though.
Well, I.
Regardless, what I want, what I want to say is that the money is not an issue to me. Really, I mean, if it needs an engine, it needs an engine. I don't care. My problem with this is that this is an opportunity for our employees to learn. And I'm sure you know that I've been a mechanic for 50 years. I have 50 years of experience. I've worked on everything from lawn mowers to motorcycles, trucks, heavy equipment, you name it. And I've rebuilt hundreds of engines with my own two hands, my own knowledge. Rebuilt them, taken them totally apart, you know, put them back together. I've never had one come apart after I put it back together, you know, something happened to it. So my, my issue here is that.
Mr. Roberts?
Wait a minute, this is an important issue.
Point is, but, you know, we have professional staff, not to.
Well, I understand, but.
We have to say, but I mean, the city manager, Assistant City Manager, Mr. Townsend.
Well, if you listen to me, if you listen to me, you'll understand where I'm coming from.
I do understand where you're coming from.
No, you don't. No, you do not. Stop cutting me off.
Could you wrap it up, please?
Stop cutting me off. I'm gonna wrap it up when I get ready, because I have a right to speak. I'm a city council member, Mr. Mayor.
Could you please?
Okay, here's the problem. 50 years, I don't know everything. I barely have scratched the surface and the knowledge required to fix a lot of stuff out there. But when my customers call me and they want something fixed, and I don't know what's the matter with it, I have to figure it out. I get a book, I read, I talk to someone else that knows about that particular thing. I pick other people's brains. I do what I have to do to figure that problem out. And I don't give up until I do. And that's the most important thing here.
Mr. Roberts?
That our employees need to be able to learn.
If you have, if you have these comments.
Stop cutting me off!
Talk with Mr. Townsend, talk with the city manager.
Every.
Let's not talk about this in a public setting, please.
No matter what your job is in this world, whether you're a mechanic, or a computer specialist, or astronaut, you're gonna come across stuff that you don't know about. And it's very important that you be able to figure those issues out.
Roberts?
And that will make you better at what you're doing. And that's what we need. We need our employees to be able to learn and grow, and grow in their job, regardless of what their job is. Stop cutting me off.
Mr. Roberts, you're being very rude to staff.
I'm not. I have a right to speak. I have a responsibility to speak. And I'm telling the, you know, I'm telling it like it is.
Insulting our staff.
I'm not insulting anyone. I'm not insulting anyone, because like I said, I've been doing this 50 years. I don't know everything. I don't know about that truck. But I know that we have to all be able to learn our job better. And you do that by fixing these kind of problems. And they can do it. I know they can do it. But they need leadership that's gonna require them to do it.
Mr. Roberts?
So let's do it. Let's just fix the problem, then we will learn. You know, if you have to replace the engine, you do. But, you know, that's the way it is. That's my issue.
Thank you.
Because you gotta learn. And our citizens, we, you know, deserve that.
Mayor Portem, please.
Yes, I think that we have spent far more time on this than it was worth. And I think that it was very disrespectful, Mr. Roberts.
The time that you've spent on this, they could have been fixed by now.
Roberts, Mr. Roberts, please.
Been very disrespectful of our staff with replacing an engine doesn't seem like it is actually in their job description maintaining it is. I would like to move that we authorize the city manager to execute the attached proposal from AutoNation totaling $14,753.17 to proceed with a required engine replacement for Unit 607, which we should have done at the August meeting.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Townsend, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, man. Item number 15, approval of upfitting five police vehicles. Captain Apgar submitted this information. The American Rescue Plan Act funding has been allocated for the upfitting of the following vehicles: five Dodge Durango Police Package vehicles. Staff has identified Frontline Mobile Tech. The cost of the upfitting is for four marked Dodge Durango Police Vehicles, $73,103. That's $18,276 per vehicle. One K-9 addition to one marked Dodge Durango, that's an additional $8,245. And one unmarked Dodge Durango Police Vehicle, $13,797. Attached is the pricing from Frontline Mobile Tech. For the total upfit cost for the five vehicles, it's a total of $95,145. ARPA funding in the amount of $95,145 was approved for this purchase. So the staff is recommending that we go forward. I'm going to ask the chief if you could just briefly describe this upfitting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is typical upfitting of the cruisers. When we get them, they come stripped with nothing. So we have to add lights, computers, internal equipment, and all the other parts that go in the cars to make them emergency vehicles, all the decals. So this is part of that normal process. We typically have included this portion in the original purchase requirement. When we come before you to buy the cars, we usually include this portion of it. We overlook that in the original documents. So that's why we're coming back a second time, just to add that back to the original purchase of the vehicles.
If I could ask, how many of our vehicles with this upfit would be equipped for K-9s?
There'll be one additional K-9 vehicle.
So that would be a total of three?
We would then have three K-9 vehicles, yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, Mayor Portem?
Yeah, so, and that was basically my question. So do we already have these vehicles in hand, or have they been ordered?
The vehicles have been delivered. And so now we're just waiting on the upfit.
Okay.
Additional discussion? Hearing none, let's take a vote, all in.
Have we formally made a motion yet? I don't think we have.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I move that council approve the upfitting costs for five Dodge Durango Police Vehicles by Frontline Mobile Tech and approved city vendor in the amount of $95,145.
Councilmember McKinney has seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Now that's gonna bring us to council activities.
There's a handout, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mayor Portem, please.
Yeah, let me share this. And I know, I'm not sure, I'm fairly sure that Ms. Pope hasn't been able to put everything on here yet. And I'm not sure, but, yeah, so this may, this may not be final, Ms. Anderson. But here, here's the things. I don't know if anyone wants to speak anything. I would say the Peace Month events last weekend were lovely. Lots of, lots of different activities.
The Senior Citizens Advisory Committee Open Forum was fantastic, as it always is. They do such a great job of bringing issues to light in the city that not only impact the senior community, but really our whole community. So I'm just really appreciative that they do that. And, you know, it's always lively and it's always good to see those people, so.
Yeah, came away with a lot of suggestions, too, a lot of good ideas.
Yeah, we always get a lot of suggestions from that one. And I would say there was a really good turnout for the, for the Green Aces Electric Vehicle Showcase as well. There were quite a few. I didn't actually count how many people brought their EVs, but quite a few. And a number of people walked by and looked at them. And then we also had some e-bikes and scooters as well. So I think that was very successful.
It's a lot of fun. Yeah, just got people thinking about purchasing an electric vehicle. Just administratively, I attended a COG board meeting on the 11th. I attended a MML board retreat on the 13th. And I went to employ Prince George's County State of the Workforce presentation. I'll distribute the booklet from that. I also attended a PG CMA meeting. So.
I think that got on here, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is clearly not a final list yet, Ms. Anderson. We'll need to add some things to it.
Okay. Is there any additional business?
There is a handout, Mr. Mayor.
Well, hearing none, is it council, shall I, shall I take a question or a comment, council?
Not a question. He has the right to speak.
Mr. Roberts, please. Is that council's work?
We don't have any business under discussion. I believe he raised his hand during the, a previous item that we had already had a chance for public hearing. So.
The hand remains up.
Well, I, it's been a long evening. And I think that I would like to adjourn the meeting. So, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. McKinney?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Neesel?
What's the motion on the floor?
To adjourn.
To adjourn the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Not as long as someone has a hand up and wants to speak.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks.